Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order and let's stand and do Pledge of Allegiance, please.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jake, if you would do a roll call, please.
Keisha Johnner.
Here.
Jim Mueller.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Entertain a motion for today's agenda?
Move we approve today's agenda?
Support.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Onto Communications. Jake? Board, any communications? Seeing none? Onto Public Comments. This is the portion of the agenda that we could hear from the public that are not topics below, on the agenda below. These could possibly become further agenda items in a future meeting. Is there any public comments? Anything online? Seeing nothing? Entertain a motion for today's consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
We are moving right along. Onto Business. Item number one is the public hearing and the sealed bid opening for the disposition of our county property at 411 Main Street in Harvey, Iowa. Jake, I will turn that over to you. Do we have?
Yeah, I think it's a road department building that is no longer in use and decided to put back on the rolls, so it was published in the paper three times. It's been on our website. I think Tyler's taken calls. Ross at the County Attorney's Office has taken calls. So, I'm not sure if anybody has any questions.
I don't, I don't have any questions. Do we have the, who has the sealed bids?
I do.
Okay. For my little sheet here. You have the sheet? Yep.
Go ahead and open them up.
Yep, go ahead and open them up, please. Thank you. This is Jake Cro, this will be Jake Crozier's bid?
Can I just read it?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm formally submitting a bid on the property located at 411 Main Street, Harvey, Iowa, 50119, in the amount of $3,510.
Next, we're opening up, yep, Bill Burkhart's.
I, Bill Burkhart, submit a bid in the amount of $7,500 for the following property, Harvey Maintenance Building located at 411 Main Street, Harvey, Iowa, 50119.
So Bill has put in a bid of 7,500.
Yes, we should just leave those open.
Yeah. And the final bid is from the city of Harvey?
From the city of Harvey. This one is bidder is the city of Harvey for the amount of $15,001. Sent by City Clerk Jennifer Geary and Mayor Dennis Seabird.
Okay, alright. Board, we have the three bids. It is clear that we have a significant higher bid of $15,001 and $1 from the city of Harvey.
How much was that again?
$15,000, yep, $1. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing and sealed bid opening?
So moved?
I'll support.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Onto item number two, which is the Resolution 2025-36, which is the disposition of the county property at 411 Main Street. Board, we have before us, obviously, we just opened up these bids. And we have a clear winner and feel that which, what we received in the amount suffice for what the property is? Do you have any questions for the discussion?
Nope, I have none.
Alright. Not then, I would entertain a motion to accept the city of Harvey's bid for $15,001 and $1 for the well, I guess it'd be approving Resolution 2025-36, but it's clearly accepting the city of Harvey's bid at $15,001.
So moved?
Second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for those that did bid. We appreciate it, and so, thank you.
A little disappointed there was no cash included.
Give you that. Give Jake a minute. Onto item number three. This would be Marion County Courthouse closure. Christopher?
Christopher, wow, I like it. That is the, that is actually the legal name, so I do not mind it at all. Yeah, so Board, as you know, the courthouse purchased a new generator, i.e. the county did. We have the generator in place. This shutdown date of May 16th, which is a Friday, will be a full day shutdown at the courthouse. We will pull out the current cabinet, set the transfer switch, get all the wiring in place, cut the old generator out and do a full hookup. That will take approximately that one business day. It helps being on a Friday. If we do have to carry over into Saturday, we can make sure it's absolutely done. And then the entire courthouse will be officially on a one backup generator instead of just pockets of the courthouse. This was a date that was obviously sent. You were all included in the email. Every department head affected in the courthouse was aware of it and was good with it. Most importantly, courts, from the standpoint of trying to find a date that works where they don't have court cases, this was a primary date that worked. So I'd like to do it sooner, but May 16th is, is the day that works for us.
I think that's I think that's great that we're gonna get it out before hopefully too much weather comes in.
Yes.
And I think that's important, so thank you for coordinating that. Board, do you have any questions for that, or how about court? Court's good?
Courts are great with it, yeah.
I, I have asked the question about the servers. So some of us that don't work in the courthouse work off of those servers. Are those servers going to be running on that day? Because it does affect a few of us outside of the courthouse.
So just like when we did the initial courthouse upgrade, courthouse was closed, we kept the servers up and going, now with one caveat this time. And I can speak to this, or Drew can speak to it. So IT is also seizing this opportunity to replace the battery backups on those servers. So there is gonna be a, a allotted time amount where the servers are gonna be unplugged, the new battery backups will be put in place, and then the servers will be plugged back in. So there will be a small outage due to server work also being done on that day. And that will be communicated through IT on what that timeframe is gonna look like, when that's gonna take place. But our current basement backup generator will function just as it did when we did the electrical upgrade.
Okay, that, thank you. That's all I ask.
Good questions, yes. This is the, I would say, the final project in which the courthouse will be, you know, when it comes to this generator, I know we had some days last year where we had to close and we had to do the electrical upgrade. I do appreciate those offices that are not in the courthouse. They will still have to be open, and obviously, the essential, you know, it wouldn't change anything for the law enforcement center and things like that, but you know, the Public Health Building 3014, you know, East Main will still be open and we will still be working. It's just the courthouse that will be looking at closing, so, okay? But I do think it is something that definitely needs to be done. I do think that sometimes those things are, are a little bit hard to swallow when it comes to just being one building. But I think these are things that, these are essential. We have to get it done, so.
Yeah, it is what it is. We gotta get things done.
Yep.
So.
I'm assuming we'll put signs on the doors and things to alert the public and website and news press release, et cetera, et cetera, so.
It'll all be done exactly how it was last time. Jim, we'll make sure that there's signage. It'll be on the webpage. I believe Emily put something out on the county's Facebook page last time just to notify, so. We still had people show up, and we still will have people show up, but we're, we're looking for that, and we will, we will be outside, so if we see people come to any of the doors, we'll have a cordial conversation with them. Just let them know Monday's the day.
Okay, no, I appreciate it, Chris. Thank you.
Alright, appreciate it.
Yep.
Yeah, thanks, Chris.
Entertain a motion for to, for the courthouse closure on May 16th.
I move that we close the courthouse on May the 16th to to allow for the time for the generator final hookups.
Second.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Onto Resolution 2025-31, which is the Homestead Tax Credit Applications for FY26. I believe this I think these all brought before us.
Yeah, I'll take them.
Okay.
If that's alright.
Yep.
So, just, if you don't mind, I'll just kinda talk about the process and what these, these are. This is an annual event. The next five items are all the credits and exemptions that are applicable to be applied to the next round of property tax statements, so we're discussing the Homestead Tax Credit, the Homestead 65 Tax Exemption, Disabled Veteran Homestead Credit Tax Credit, Military Exemption, and Family Farm Tax Credit. The difference between a credit and exemption is the exemption is, it's whatever the value that the state is allowing is taken off your taxable value, and a credit is an amount calculated that reduces your tax bill. So it's just kind of the front end or the back end of getting to that tax statement. These are all per Code of Iowa. All of these applications, you sign up once, and once you're approved, it stays on until you sell your property. So we're only dealing with each annual year. We do this for people that have signed up throughout the year. The process is, the assessor's office receives all these applications throughout the year, creates lists, makes a recommendation to the board for approval. If they're allowed or dis, should be disallowed. They provide that information to me. And when we roll our real estate years each year, it rolls to our side, the auditor's side. And then, once that's approved and applied to the taxes, when the taxes are rolled down to the treasurer's office, the treasurer's office then has them on the taxes for their bills and also submits the request to the state for reimbursement from the state. This will be the first year, I think it is, that the military exemption portion is not backfilled from the state. That was changed last year, so the military exemptions at the $4,000 level is just not funded anymore from the state. So a, a, any questions on any of these? This is a very standard administrative portion of the process.
And I, remind me, Jake, regarding the farm, Family Farm Tax Credit. How does that, how's that working? Is that like if your family has a farm and then?
Yeah, so Family Farm Credit is, there's less and less of them each year. As family farms are sold to bigger, bigger farms and that type of thing. But a Family Farm Credit, there's a list of rules that have to apply. You either have to, you have to own the farm and, and then have either yourself farming it or someone in your family. And there's a level of, I can never say the word, but consuetty or however that word is, or the, the different layers down so far. And it also is not to be cash, cash rented.
Okay.
So it needs to be act, I believe the terminology is actively engaged in farming to a certain level. And again, this is a situation where once it's signed up for, that, that application can stay in place for a long time. Unless it's sold or somebody comes in and says, you know, we started cash renting that last year or something like that. The, the level of standard is, is the information we have available to us.
Is there any follow-through on that? So let's say you did sign up for it, later on, you decided to rent it out.
Follow-up from the county?
Well, from the state, wherever it may be.
Not from the state. And we did a project a few years ago, worked with Stephanie in the assessor's office, so generally, no. Generally, it's, once you sign up, it rolls forward. I believe, if I remember this right, two or three years ago, we did a, or the assessor's office sent out a letter. And I apologize if I have this a little bit, just because, but I believe they did send out a letter just trying to update our records a little bit. And so if, if they sent back and said they were now cash renting or something, that was removed. I think we only have like five new applicants this year.
There wasn't, there wasn't a ton, that's why.
And sometimes it's like somebody already has it and then they acquire a piece next to it, so they apply for that one piece. But there's just less and less overall family farms. You might say they're being engaged by the family.
Now I'm gonna ask you another question that you may not know the answer to. When it comes to some of these credits and things, when you talked about the military and it not being backfilled by the state, could we be looking at several of these? I mean, whatever these credits may be, or?
So military is the one that they stopped funding. They raised the level from eight, 1,850 to 4,000. So if your, if your value, your house is 100,000, you, you take that exemption and it reduces the, the value of the house before you start your, your tax calculation process. Actually, I was communicating with Michaela this morning, just, we were communicating back and forth prior to the meeting, and it does sound like, I don't follow the I'm not real good about that, following all the different versions of legislation, but it does sound like there are legislation proposals in Des Moines with different varying levels of removing these credits, you know, taking, you know, taking away rollbacks, removing the credits, kinda going a different process. So your initial question was, is that, could it possible that we lose more funding? Yes. I mean, and they may change the whole structure. So like a homestead, you know, you sign up for a homestead, take away the rollback, take away the general stuff. Homestead becomes an exemption, and I think up to 25,000. I doubt that will be funded. That's probably just gonna be a reduction in the value, but there's also would be no rollbacks, so I really have no way to judge where your ending taxable value would be. And then there will be limitations on the growth, so the levy will go from the levy may drop dramatically just because of the, I just don't know how they're gonna lay it out.
Trying to simplify it, it's not a bad idea. I just think that there's a lot of unknowns for us.
Right, and, and for our end, our biggest concern is literally programming, just making it the changes so it will work.
Yeah, so, okay. All things that we need to think about as a board, you know, some of this stuff, we, it's mandated by us, by the state, and the, you know, in the future, there may not be the funding to backfill like it has been, so. We'll take these one by one.
Yeah, I think so. And like I said, this, Stephanie, the front end, but they collect them, make lists. They entered into our system, which we greatly appreciate. Then we run our list by application date, and so, and again, it's a one-time signup. People do not have to sign up again. And last year was the first year, or last year that Homestead 65 was really big, and we still have quite a few, but we had like 50-some pages last year, and this year it's 30-some, so.
Resolution 2025-31. If there is no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Resolution, item number five, Resolution 2025-32, which is the Homestead, Homestead 65 Tax Exemption. I'll entertain a motion for that unless there's further discussion.
Move we approve 2025-32?
I'll second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Onto item number six, which is the Disabled Veteran Homestead Tax Credit, which is Resolution 2025-32. I'll entertain a motion for that unless we have further discussion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-33?
Support.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Item number seven, Military Exemption Tax is Resolution 2025-34. Any discussion? Not? Entertain a motion?
Move we approve Resolution 2025-34?
Second.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Item number eight, Resolution 2025-35, which is the Family Farm Tax, Tax Credit. Entertain a motion for that?
Move we approve Resolution 2025-35?
I'll second.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye. Thank you, everyone, on that. Some pages here, real quick. Onto item number nine, which is Marion County Properties, a name designation board. If you'll remember, since we have done some proposed changes that are happening and will come, thought it was important that we put back on the agenda for us to discuss actually renaming the buildings. The building which we're setting out now, we oftentimes call it 3014 East Main. And then we have the Public Health Building, which is 2003 North Lincoln Street. Since Public Health is gonna be, have Public Health, but also have other, we're gonna have HR, we're gonna have economic development in it. I think it's important that we go ahead and rename that, and then this building, we will have EMA, and we will obviously be able to have these conference rooms, and then we are going to be leasing out, so. For, to make Jake's office, the auditor's office, a little, maybe a little easier and how we go about naming these, has anybody have any thoughts on how to go about this, or? And I don't know, maybe Chris has some input.
I say let's keep it simple. I don't know, I'm, I'm kinda leaning like, that's the north part of town, it's called the north annex, this is the east part of town, it's called the east annex.
Are we, are we allowed? Again, I the north and east, we, we were talking about this up at the office some, and again, I get that, and we've had an east annex kind of before the 106, whatever, but east and north, if you do that, then, and again, we can find things with any of these suggestions, but if we buy something, who knows in between, then what do you do? That type of thing. There was a suggestion, I don't know if anybody cares or likes it, but just to call it the 3014 Annex and the 2003 or the 2003 Annex, that's another possibility that we, we did, we talked about in the office. I don't know if anybody else has any ideas. I know Lindsey, Lindsey really knows.
Word makes it easy.
I think that we gotta be able to name the building outside, and so it is something that I think, I want it to look professional. I would prefer it not to be 2003 North Lincoln or whatever, so, but yeah, I also think that when naming these buildings, however we name them, we have our old Sixth Street building, and I'm gonna maybe, I know Chris has been working and trying to get, but it says Marion County Annex on it now. I don't know if we may have to get legal county attorney involved, but we may need to issue a letter to get that taken off that building. We have asked multiple times, and so I don't want it to cause any confusion. And obviously, this would be going into place. I'm looking at that right at July 1st because, you know, we're transferring with our meetings, we're having people move. I just want it to be smooth, but I know we have work to do between now and then, so.
Yeah, and speak to our former Sixth Street Annex that still is labeled Marion County Annex Facing Main Street. That organization that purchased that remodeled it to like 99% completion is now defunct. So that's the issue we're running into. I've sent multiple emails, correspondence, phone calls to try to get that taken care of and don't seem to be getting anywhere with it. At minimum, get approval, so maybe County Attorney's Office, if, if I could just get approval to go there myself, I just don't wanna trespass
Correct, yep.
tear down our sign off somebody else's building.
Yes, Lisa?
There has been talk about Public Health naming Public Health the Lincoln Building, Lincoln Center, since it's on Lincoln Street. There's been, we kinda like that one, but I don't have one for 3014, so.
The Main Street, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Considering the courthouse is on Main Street?
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
I tend to agree with Steve. Keep it simple. Make it self-explanatory. We've got a building on the east, make it the east annex. We got a building on the north, make it the north annex. Then it becomes very easy and clear to the public if we're having a meeting in the east annex. It's on the east side of town. We're having a meeting in the north annex. Better head for the north part of town. I'm a big proponent of east and north.
I mean, that's, that's simple to me, and, and it's not confusing.
And thinking of the public, I think that's as important, and so if there's no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to, that's, because what I would like to do is be able to give this directive for Chris to be able to work on, we gotta work on signage, so. Entertain a motion for renaming 3014 and 2003 North Lincoln.
I move we remain, rename 3014 East Main to be the east annex and 2003 North Lincoln Street to be the north annex.
Second.
And we will have Marion County included in on that? Yep, okay.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Thank you, and I do appreciate the input. Those, I mean, so, thank you for those that did give us names, so, suggestions. Onto item number 10, which is Resolution 2025-37. This is the Marion County Opioid Committee Board. If you all remember, I believe it was a couple meetings ago, County Attorney brought before us looking at possibly now is probably the time to set up the opioid committee. We do have funds in there, and it isn't, it's one of these things that I think that it's important that we have a committee to give back the recommendation to the board. And so we can, the board ultimately have the final decision on dispersment of the funds. We do oversee the funds. And, but a committee is good. Has anybody thought about what they would like to see in a committee? I, I have some thoughts, but I mean, I really wanna hear from you guys. I did reach out, our last meeting, I did make mention in the updates that if anybody wanted to be on the committee, to please reach out. Lindsey did reach out, and she is willing to serve on that committee. I didn't hear from anybody else. Lindsey, you said at this, she's not looking to ask for anything at, at this time, and so I do think that's important. I have stressed before that when we're looking at this, that if you are a department that is seeking funding, I think that it'd be best that you remove yourself, just because I think that we should probably be looking at a five-member board. And then if you have to abstain, you're down to four, that makes it so it's difficult. I don't wanna have a tie, and yeah.
So I think it would be important to have a supervisor on that committee as well.
Okay.
I would offer myself up to serve on that committee if no one else is interested.
So we have, I, I have Public Health, and we can use, I mean, in board, this is something we can discuss if we wanted to have a Public Health versus representative. But I think if we designate a, designate a representative, it needs to be consistent. It's not, you know, oh, I'm gonna send you this month or whatever for, for meetings. So I would like to see Public Health, yes, I agree, I wanted to have a supervisor on. I think it's important that we have a county attorney, the county attorney, or the representative from the county attorney's office. I do believe it's important that we have the auditor's office involved. So, the auditor or his representative.
So can we trade being on the committee to not having to do the reporting?
No, sorry. I know. Right?
Good thought, but no.
And that leaves us with the fifth one that is, was open. And I was wondering, Board, I was looking through what other counties have done, examples, and And I was wondering, board, um, I was looking through, uh, what other counties have done examples and, uh, some of them have like a, a medical examiner, um, on there, um, and what they deal with. So, um, open for discussion on the fifth one.
Well, these, these funds, I mean, you know, I, at first I thought I really wouldn't want anybody on the committee that was going to ask for funds, but you know, they're limited in their use, so I, I, I have no great fear of somebody being on that committee, you know, that would ask, maybe ask for funds because like I said, they're, they have a limited use, so it, it, it would make our committee a little easier to fill.
And the only, the only thing that makes me pause in that, and I think, you know, I think it's good that we have this discussion, is that I think once we put this out there, you're going to see that you're going to have a lot of requests. I know that the county attorney has been, I've been reached out to, they are going to be bombarded. And, uh, there is some money, um, in setting in there now. It, this money is not going to be infinite. I mean, it's, it is going to be, uh, so that's something that they have to be think, thinking of as a committee. I think it's important that they would be looking and telling us how much they felt that they wanted to spend and where they would want to spend this.
Yeah, I think, like, I think what you're trying to say is that you can't be hiring a full-time employee because the money is going to run out.
Right, yeah. And it's, it is, so I, I'm not for sure what, um, well, you know, what you guys are thinking of. I, that was my only hesitant because if you're on that committee and you have to abstain and then you have four members and you've got all of these, uh, let's say RFPs before you that people are asking for funding and, um, and you've got a tie, what are you going to do?
Well, let's clarify too, as to what, I mean, what power does this committee have? Do they, do they go through the requests and make recommendations to the supervisors who then subsequently approve the expenditures? I wouldn't think that the committee would be able to approve the expenditure.
No.
But they're going to give us the recommendation.
They would give us the recommendation based upon whatever they vote for. So I think in that regard, Steve, I tend to agree with you, even if they ultimately request funds, it's still ultimately our call whether we approve it or not.
Right.
Good. If you guys are, I mean, I, this is why it's good to have a conversation because honestly, um, you know, it's one of those things, I just want to make sure that we're not.
They could be legitimate ask.
Absolutely.
I mean.
And they might have some really good input, even though they are ultimately going to request some funds. I think it's important to make sure that we get all of the people on the committee that has the greatest amount of impact on making sure that have valued decisions on where those funds go, whether they're going to ask for any of the money or not.
Good. So do you have a fifth member that you're thinking?
Does the Jay, does the sheriff's office feel like they would like to be a member of that?
The sheriff couldn't make it today, but, uh, he's very interested in having us on it.
I agree with that.
I guess I don't see the difference if we're on it and ask for money and Jim's on it and he's going to be the final one to have a vote. Do you understand my point there? Is, he's on the committee, but he's also one that's going to vote on that money.
You know, that's a good point. And maybe the, having a supervisor representative would be a non-voting member of the committee. And have the committee.
I just, I think it'd be important to have law enforcement on there. Uh, we deal with the opioid problem a lot, so.
Right. I, I just, yeah. And I, and the only reason I didn't have, um, the sheriff written down was just because I've figured the sheriff's department was going to request funds. Just trying to make it easier for them and requesting, so, uh, but, um, if, if, I still think we need to have, I mean, it's either we have a three-member board or a five-member board, or committee, should I say, not a board, committee. So.
Well, but then that defeats the purpose of what he just said.
If I'm a non-voting member, then you, then you've got five.
You've only got four. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Just add another one.
Just add another one. Right, add another person. Right, yeah.
What about considering somebody from one of the hospitals or both of the hospitals in town with the emergency rooms? They often see people that are dealing with opioids and, and maybe.
So you're thinking more of a?
That's a good.
Either having them on the board or the committee should reach out to them to see if they would have any ideas for ways to use the funding, either one, but I think talking with somebody from both hospitals would be a good idea.
And there's nothing that says this committee has to be an employee, a county employee.
Nope, you're right, yep.
I think that's a good suggestion, Lindsay.
Well, then you could possibly go to a seven member and then keep yourself as a voting, uh, member, um, Jim. If we wanted to add a representative from each hospital. So you could do the public health, the county attorney, the auditor, supervisor, um, the sheriff and then, uh,
A hospital representative?
A, yeah, hospital representative. How do you guys feel about that?
I'm okay with that.
Yep. County attorney, do you have any thoughts?
Let's say there's a limited use for it.
Is, is it going to get, I mean, is that too big? That's, I mean, you know, big, too big a committee?
I, I'm not necessarily concerned about that portion of it. I would just say on behalf of myself that, I do want to be on this committee. Um, I think that there's going to be a lot of discussion about what proper use for these funds are going to be. And I want to make sure that what we bring back to the board, um, for proposals is going to fit what the funds.
It's going to fly.
Right. And I'm happy to try to help navigate through that, um, on the committee. And I, I don't have any intention to ask for funds for myself, so that's not a consideration. I, I will forego that. I know I raised a, um, potential thing that I might ask for at the last hearing, but to simplify matters, you know, at least for this first round, that we do this, I'm, I, I don't intend to ask for any money. I just think it's important to have people on here who know about how opioids have affected, um, our community and, uh, to make sure that Marion County sees the benefit of these funds. You know, there's a lot of outside influence, uh, Ms. Johnner, it just exactly like you said. You know, there are going to be a lot of people, I think, that, you know, have ideas and I just think it's important that, that whatever we decide that it stays here in Marion County, we need people that will understand that.
Well, it's like I said, Jared, I don't have a problem with a committee member requesting funds if it's a legitimate ask.
Jared, um, Jake, I wonder for simplicity, do we need, since, you know, we're considering, you know, putting the hospitals in, are we, do we need to get like a name to be able to, or can we just say the, you know, Pella Hospital, Knoxville Hospital representative as a committee? Um, how, how, what's best in doing this, setting this committee up?
Well, Jake, if you want to go ahead, that's fine, but I do have a thought on this. I, I, I do think that it should be the position, not necessarily a name. I think it, you know, this is going to go on for a while. You know, we're going to, these funds are going to presumably trickle in for a number of years. And I think for continuity's sake, you know, that it makes sense to have the office be the person, not, you know, a named individual. You know, i- if that causes problems, I don't think it's a huge issue or anything like that, but that's just my general thought on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's an issue.
I just didn't, I really.
I know you wanted, I think you were talking about continuity earlier, which is valid. Section three there, I think says, if a person shall be unavailable, be permitted to designate an alternate.
So that's already in there, okay.
And so, I mean, I think the committee, if you are saying representatives from these particular offices and hospitals, that works for your structure.
Good, alright.
And it's legit, it's, it's only a recommendation. It's not dispensing of any county funds. That's your decision.
Okay.
Would, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
You know, and just, I don't want to get in the weeds or anything, but we are going to have to, the committee is going to have to decide how much of this money in the first round that we're going to, distribute, you know, first and foremost. And had, would, I would envision need to come back to the board first and say, look, here's what our ideas for the first round of proposals. And then, you know, that way we know how much money we're talking about and we can, um, view the proposals under that light, so.
If you had a representative from each one of the, from Knoxville Hospital and the Pella Hospital, you're at seven.
Yep.
So I think that's perfect.
Okay, so what we would need is, uh, we're going to be setting the committee and, and this, you know, this is the motion. I'm not making the motion, but I'm just saying, we need to set the opioid committee to have public health, um, representative, county attorney, um, auditor, supervisor, sheriff, um, office, um, the hospital, and Pella and then Knoxville. So that's what we'd be looking at, a setting of committee. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Six, yeah.
Can we appoint Jared to make sure that we kick off that?
So we're looking at six, six committee representatives.
Be seven. He, he, he actually, I think that.
So if there's seven.
You might as well allow him to be able to have a vote when it comes to that. There'd be seven representatives for the committee.
We're counting the hospitals as two. Right, okay.
Each individually, yes. They'll each have a representative.
Okay.
And you would like, are you saying you would like?
I think we need to have somebody that's in charge of setting up the committee. I mean, and the first organizational meeting and then they can vote for a different chair after it started.
I'm fine with that.
Are you willing to make that motion?
I'll make that motion that we have seven representatives for the opioid, um, committee, consisting of a supervisor, somebody from public health, the county attorney's office, the auditor's office, sheriff's office, Pella Hospital and the Knoxville Hospital. And Jared will do the organizational part of it. And then subsequently, that committee will create its own hierarchy.
So those are the members on it that will include in exhibit A of the resolution. Very good. And Jim, I'd like to have, you're more than happy to sit on that.
I'm, I'm happy to serve if that's.
Yep, no, I'd be fine with that, yep. Okay, so he made the motion?
He certainly did. I'll second that.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
I was trying to wrap my head around the, the motion.
Great discussion. I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you. Onto item number 11, which is Board of Supervisor Updates. Any updates, uh, Mr. Mueller?
Uh, I am going to attend the Iowa Rural Summit later this week. So that will be a Thursday slash potentially Friday, uh, opportunity. So I'll learn all there is to know about the rural Iowa Rural Summit in Des Moines.
Mr. McCombs?
I have none.
And I don't have any either. So with that, I will entertain a motion to close open session. Go into closed.
I move we close open session.
Support.
Mueller.
Aye.
Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Reconvene regular session, April. Entertain a motion to reconvene from closed session.
So moved.
Second. Johnner.
Aye.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
There was no action taken in close, from the closed session. That, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion we adjourn.
For.
McCombs.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
John.
Aye.